I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Clay County Commission. We will begin with our invocation, so whenever you're prepared, please proceed.
If you'll join me in prayer. Father, we come to you tonight. We, Lord, we want to, once again, we want to thank you for the opportunities that we have to come together, to seek your wisdom, your direction. Lord, we take this moment, Lord, to remember all those in our community that are in need and hurting. Lord, we ask you, once again, that you would continue to bring healing to the situations and tragedy, Lord, that we faced two weeks ago. We just pray for your comfort and wisdom. Lord, we pray that you would bring peace, justice, Lord, into our communities. We make decisions as leaders. Lord, we pray for this county. We pray for this part of our nation, Lord, that you would help us to use the resources and the skills wisely. Lord, may we actively be involved in serving and caring for one another. Lord, we lift up our community and our neighborhoods. We ask you, Lord, that you would, you would bring protection, Lord, in our schools and give leaders wisdom, Lord, and raising up the next generation. Lord, we ask you that tonight, as we acknowledge you, as we seek your direction, we pray, Lord, that you would be in this meeting, Lord, that you would give us wisdom, strength, and courage to know exactly what to do. We thank you for the leadership of this county. We ask you, Lord, that you would give them the wisdom and to be challenged each and every day. And, Lord, we ask you, most of all, that your grace and your love be present tonight and that everything that is said and done, that it brings healing and unity in our community. And we pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you. Please remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Willington?
Here.
Commissioner Lawson?
Here.
Commissioner Wagner?
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
That brings us to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion related to this evening's agenda? And there you go.
Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. Is there any discussion? And I do have one amendment that I would like to make. I would like to remove 2023-148. That would be the appointments for nominees to the KC ATA Board. We need a little bit more time on that, and I'd rather take that time and bring it to the commission when it is ready to go. With that, make a motion, I guess, to remove that?
Yes, I move to approve tonight's agenda with the removal of 2023-148.
Very good. Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda with the omission of 2023-148. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Willington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
That brings us to our public comments portion. Is there any member of the public who would care to comment on any issues this evening? Yes, ma'am. By the way, for those who wish to comment, come up to the podium. Make sure that the light on the collar of the microphone is green. State your name and speak into the microphone and then let us know what your thoughts are.
Good evening. My name is Linda Hetzel. I live at 13318 Plattsburgh Road, Carney. And I'm here to build upon my presentation last week. I wanted to provide additional information. So I brought a handout. Is it a good time to give out a handout? As I wait for you to get that. So I'm a public health nurse by education, and I've been regeneratively farming 14 acres for the last 30 years in Clay County. And I actually want to invite you all. I know you have to come two at a time, so you're not holding a meeting, to visit the farm. I'd love to show you what can be done with a degraded piece of land when it's restored to ecosystem health. So my phone number and address is on your handout. I am requesting that the Clay County Commission adopt a guiding principle for your retreat and the comprehensive plan development, and that is Aldo Leopold's land ethic. And the attached sheet to the bulleted sheet has references and links, so you can go, if you should happen to have time, go to that later. But I wanted to get these 12 points to you. A land ethic is simply caring about people, about land, and about strengthening the relationships among and between them. And I noted from the budget report for 2023 that caring about the people of the community was really important, so this is consistent with that. We are all part of the thinking community that is responsible for shaping our land ethic as a community. Grounded in values, ethics are a moral sense of right and wrong. I think you all spoke to that last week about the events occurring in this county. Care for people, however, cannot be separated from care for the land, and the pressure of economic expediency is immense. The true costs of planning decisions and their execution must be considered. Unintended consequences have economic impacts. A land ethic is a product of social evolution because it evolves in the minds of a thinking community, which I understood you to say you were going to be assembling for the development of the comprehensive plan. Mainstream stream economics are being impacted by ecology and the natural sciences generally in meaningful ways, with extreme weather events and the collapse of necessary ecosystems. Nature must be an integral part to Clay County's policy framework. Well-designed and implemented development plans can identify, then minimize, and mitigate risks and trade-offs, stimulate economies, and improve health, all while enhancing vital benefits from nature. Let's rethink and reframe economics such that economic activity is informed by an ethical attitude towards nature. Rather than rushing for solutions, let's make sure we are asking the appropriate questions. Thank you for this opportunity, and I thank you for your service. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the public? Seeing none. That brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are two items on this evening's consent agenda. The first item is commission meeting minutes for April 5th and for April 12th, and Resolution 2023-151, which is approving invoice payments from April 14th through April 25th for 678 invoices totaling $2,837,757.96.
Is there a motion related to this evening's consent agenda?
Just move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of the consent agenda. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Willington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Brings us to our regular agenda. The first item is 2023-154. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-154 is approving the invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from April 14th through April 25th for six invoices totaling $3,947.57.
Is there a motion? Are there any questions of the administrator? Seeing none, is there a motion on 2023-154?
Yes, move to approve 2023-154.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-154. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Willington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
I'm going to recuse myself.
Motion passes five in favor, one recusing.
Thank you. Next item on our regular agenda is 2023-149. Administrator?
Resolution, excuse me, Resolution 2023-149 is the consideration of a request to waive fees, interest, and penalties and taxes due to an error by the county for property located One Stop Blue Light Liberty LLC at 2801 North Lightburn Street here in Liberty, Missouri. We have the applicant is here this evening to present their request, and we also have Collector O'Reilly and Assessor Baldwin here to also provide information to the commission.
If the applicant would like to come forward and present, please. And as I said, I think the microphone is off, so please make sure the microphone is on and identify yourself and then proceed.
Okay, this regard my husband, and he was the sole owner of the property, One Stop Blue Light. And so this bill, some friend just passed me like a few weeks ago, so I did not notice they still have this kind of bill there, out there. My husband was deceased last year, January 9th, and so then I'm the court-appointed representative of him. So when I get this bill, it's already like three months late. I just want to request to see whether the late fee and interest can be waived, because I was not like, you know, get a bill on time until a few weeks ago. Some friends passed me. We sold, he sold the property like November 4th of 2021, so we no longer access to that property after November 2021. So then the bill came out. I did not know there's any bill still, you know, there until recently. And I was not trying to purposely pay late the property tax for my deceased husband. So I want to see whether you can make that decision to waive the interest and the late fee. I will pay the principal. That's, yeah, I think that's what I want to present. Thank you.
Are there any questions of the applicant among the commissioners? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you very much. And first of all, sorry for your loss with your husband. So I'm trying to, so I understand, and I'm reading what you have written for us. Is this, so your husband no longer had an interest in the property? Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, the property and the business was sold out totally November 2021, and this bill is for property tax for 2021. So I think somebody else from that property got the invoice sometime. They passed me a few weeks ago. So when I get the bill already three months late, so that's why the interest and the late fee accumulated until now. I just want to see you can waive that interest late fee, and I can pay the principal tomorrow.
Sure. Well, and as I'm sure it's been explained to you, we are able to do that if there is fault from the county. If we have done something that is incorrect, then state law says that we should then let, you know, remove those. So I'm just trying to understand, if it is the county's issue, how did we create that issue? And so if you, so if this has been sold?
Yes. I was not in that.
From the LLC. No, 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 you're fine. You're fine. If the LLC sold it, but you owned it as of January of that year, and this may get into a question I may ask staff, I guess my question is, you clearly sold it within that year, but I guess the question is, when does it show up? Or how long does it stay on our tax rolls to suggest that you still have an obligation or that there is an obligation to pay? I'll let staff answer that one. But for you, I guess my other question is, the, is the LLC a separate entity that is different from you? Is it viewed as a different entity, and you are really not part of that entity? Or are you part of that entity?
Okay, I will answer your question. I was not a part of an entity or business, but I was a court-appointed representative of Robert Chow.
Yeah.
And then, so I have the paper, you have the copy of it.
Right.
So everything that due to him, I'm the one to represent him to.
Got it. And so?
Yeah, I was not have any interest.
Right, so you are dealing with all the matters of the estate and settling all the matters of the estate?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow up on that question, at what point were you appointed to that, in that role?
You say when?
When you, when were you appointed to basically be the?
Representative?
Yes.
Last year, I think around February or March, that time, yeah.
Thank you.
And the reason is, I, they send it to all the location of business, but we don't have that business more. So I don't, yeah, so, okay, thank you. Is that it? Any other question?
Any other questions from the commission of the applicant? Okay. If the staff would come forward and make their presentation on this?
I guess, what was the question? Tracy Baldwin, Clay County Assessor. Could you repeat what was asked?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you signed off.
No, I think, so I guess my question is, as it relates to timing, so it's, if I understand correctly, the gentleman who owned the LLC passes away after the first of the year. I'm assuming that means, because our position is that it's still owed, that because the LLC and its owner owned the property prior to his passing?
Correct.
That the estate still owes that obligation? Is that basically our position?
Yes, you're correct, yes.
Okay. So, and then, as far as, frankly, I, this would be my dumb question for the evening, or maybe one of many, but is this kind of, this is what will happen if anyone passes away in Clay County, whether they own a piece, well, assuming they own any kind of piece of property, we are still obligated to collect on what that individual had as of the beginning of that year, no matter when, at what point they passed?
Correct. There's actually a statute, 137-350, and it states, "It shall be the duty of executor or administrator of the state of any deceased person to deliver the assessor such certified statement on all property of such deceased as provided in Sections 137-325 to 137-420. No such executor or administrator shall be eligible for discharge until all taxes levied and assessed under the provisions of the sections."
Got it.
So?
And there is no, there's no provision in there for how or, or, I'll ask it this way. It doesn't matter how long it takes for the executor to receive that tax bill. There's no real provision that, you know, if you mess, if it took longer than expected because now the address is no longer a good one, and now it's got to matriculate over, the state law doesn't say?
No, no.
It just, it is what it is.
They would still be responsible. And unfortunately, you know, this is a kind of a timing issue. So it was confusing for both parties, I'm sure, but that's the biggest confusing part of this. But unfortunately, as of January 1 of 2020, it was still in that name, and that's the taxes are due.
Got it. All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Could you read the last line of the state statute? Because I think, I'm trying, I'm trying to catch that, and you kind of trailed off a little bit, but it dealt with, it dealt just with taxes, or also taxes, interest, and penalty?
Well, it says discharge until all taxes levied, which I would assume that would all be penalties and interest. Typically, in most of the statutes, when you're talking about the principal and the interest, those are usually considered the same conversation.
Okay. Commissioner Lawson, did you seek recognition? Go ahead and push your button, and I'll put you on. There we go. Proceed.
Okay. So, I must be asleep at the wheel. This thing was sold November of 2021, right? The tax statement is for 2022.
Actually, no, the due date is for January 31st of 2021.
Okay, 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 okay. I see. And so this bill went out, did it go to the proper address?
Yes, yes, and I do have documentation on kind of a timeline, if the commission wanted copies of how the deed transferred and things like that. One thing that I didn't present, maybe the collector may have, is who paid the 22 taxes, which I assume would be the new company.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? I would remind commissioners that we have several options. We can, of course, decide to take more time to think about this, or we can entertain a motion for either to vote on this with the appropriate box checked, because this is one of those that requires that. So I will be willing to entertain a motion. Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. I move to check denial for the request under 2023-149.
Motion has been made for the passage of 2023-149 with the box denies marked. Further discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, ma'am, I just wanted to explain something real quick. We're getting ready to vote on this, to deny it, and I'm going to tell you why I'm going to vote to deny it. We, by law, can only approve this if the county, the assessor's office, somebody did something wrong. There's nothing to show that we did anything wrong. It's certainly a very unfortunate circumstance that happened, and I'm sorry for the loss of Mr. Chow and for the process of having to deal with the estate. I know that's very difficult, because I've done the same thing. But unfortunately, because we can't find any fault on the county, not only can we not approve this for you, but also the fees and those interest rates and things that build up, we don't get to decide those either. That happens at the state level, from what I understand, from our attorney. That's not something that we decide. The assessor doesn't decide that. That's the state that decides that, which I hate, and I don't like them. I don't think they're fair. I think what is happening tonight is not fair. I'll tell you that right now. But at the end, we're going, I am going to have to vote to deny it, just because that's the process, that's the law. I just wanted to explain that.
Further discussion? You are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Willington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. Very well, that brings us to number 2023-150. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-150 is approving agreement for electronic signature solution with Blue Link, and Director Shaw is here to provide information to the commission.
Please proceed.
Good evening, commissioners. Kevin Shaw, Clay County Director of IT. We're bringing before you today this electronic signatures, signature solution with Blue Link. Its pricing is coming from the NASBO contract, and it will be a three-year contract. If there's any other questions?
Are there any questions of Mr. Shaw? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. For those at home who may not know what NASBO is?
National Association of State Procurement Officers, or officials.
Right, you got 100% on that. And I just want to point out that this is one of those opportunities where we can piggyback off of another procurement and contract, so we didn't necessarily procure it ourselves, but they did, and we use that pricing to bring forward today. Again, for the folks at home, how that works. And that is correct, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Checked myself, too.
100% for you as well.
100% for me, all right, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? With that, is there a motion regarded to, regarding 2023-150? Commissioner Wagner?
Yes, move to approve 2023-150.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-150. For the discussion, seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Willington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is 2023-142. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-142 is the appointment of two members to the Clay County Park Advisory Board. The appointments are for Sheila Lilis and John McCune. The appointments would expire December 31st, 2026.
Thank you. Since I'm the one who proposes, I'll go ahead and just mention, I think everybody got the information and any other persons who, any other applications that we got in. Both these individuals, I think, are outstanding and would be a great addition to our parks board, so certainly if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you. Seeing none, I'm sorry? Did I say, oh, you, okay, I see. Thank you. Commissioner Wagner?
I was going to make a motion if you're ready for one.
See no further discussion, so I'll be open for a motion.
Move to approve 2023-142.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-142. Further discussion? Commissioner Lawson?
What? Oh, I didn't, I hit it accidentally.
That's no problem. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Willington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
2023-152. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-152 is the appointment to the Children's Services Fund Board. There are two appointments to fill unexpired terms. Richard Dean Jones, whose term would expire December 31st, 2023, and Whitney Lynn Carlisle, whose term would expire December 31st, 2025. This evening, we have a guest in the audience that is the chair of the Children's Services Fund Board that would like to spend a few minutes talking to the commission about the services and the activities of the board.
Thank you, come forward. While the, while they're making their way to the podium, I would like to, in the future, maybe on occasion, come up with some short presentation as we go through these boards and commissions, just so we're all up to speed. Please make sure your microphone is on, identify yourself, and go right ahead.
All right, I've got green. Thank you, commissioners, for the invitation. I'm Ken Honig. I am the chair.
I am the chair of the Clay County Children's Services Fund Board. I'm going to just briefly tell you a little of what we do and kind of how we operate. First of all, I don't want to be too presumptuous, but hopefully, I will be thankful that we will have a full board after today's meeting. And thank you for reappointing me to the current term. The Children's Services Fund in Clay County was passed on a very close vote. 11,000 people cast votes, and the margin of victory was a little less than 60 votes back in 2017. Those of us who are on the board have taken that as a very clear order to be very careful with the funds that we spend. It's a little broader than this, but the state statute essentially authorizes us to fund mental health services and also a level of transitional housing. And there are a few other things in there as well, but that's where the bulk of the funding goes. I'm pleased to report, we got money on the street before we even had an executive director. So the board convened for the first time in January of 18. We were able to get money out onto the street to, primarily through mental health services by the end of 18. And our overhead is less than 2%. So we run with a staff of two. They're housed down at I Works in Gladstone, and that's important for a couple of reasons. One is it's not very expensive, quite frankly. Rather than having our own facility that we would traditionally pay rent on, it's a more communal facility. Obviously, we have two separate offices, but it also gives us the meeting space and what have you. But it's also a nice demonstration, since we are stewards of taxpayer money, to be out in the public. I mean, it's a very public building, as far as that goes. It's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but Jackson County is now running their Children's Services Fund Board with double-digit employees. And like I say, we run with two, although our executive director does say she wouldn't hate having a third. But we do run less than 2% of an overhead, so I'm proud of that. We're lucky to be in Clay County. We fund 19, well, we don't fund anything. The taxpayers, with our assistance, fund 19 different service providers in Clay County, and then also the school districts. Some of that, they play an ample role in helping to identify some of the folks who need those services, since the school districts, by definition, cover the county, and they cover children. So the cooperation that we get, that we have seen for the past five years between the service providers and also between the school districts has been phenomenal. That, more than anything, has allowed the Children's Services Fund to be very efficient in really making an impact. So we've come through COVID. There are obviously challenges that came with that. The other thing I do want you to know about the board of the service fund, and then I'll be quiet and take any questions you might have, we have not taken the approach of telling anyone what services are needed. We have taken the approach of, once a year, going through a grant cycle and having the service providers and the school districts tell us what services they see are needed in Clay County. And as kind of a free-market guy, I love that, and it's worked very well. It really has. It's worked very nicely. We are not, I'm a banker, okay? I'm not a mental health expert. I'm not a transitional housing expert. I'm very interested in what happens in my community, but I'm not the guy to say what services need to be done. I can do a decent job of sitting with eight other folks, and when we see proposals, kind of help with that. So anyway, that's where we are. We appreciate, you know, we really do appreciate what the taxpayers have done. And we frankly appreciate the role that the commission has played, because there really has not, there's not been any interference at all, regardless of who commissioners are. None of us have ever reported, and we'll have conversations once in a while about this, you know, someone putting pressure on us to do this or do that. And likewise, we're blessed that no one on the board has an agenda. So it's been good. We're available whenever you want to know something about us. But if you, you know, remember nothing else, we've been able to keep a low overhead. We're blessed to have such wonderfully cooperative agencies in the area. And we really do look for the providers, so let us know what the needs are, rather than vice versa.
Thank you very much, and we certainly appreciate your service and that of the board. One of the reasons that it's important for us to get these appointments made is, if I understand correctly, you are getting ready to engage on your kind of busier time, I guess.
We are. We are. My wife will have the joy of not having me in the house two nights next week, because we'll be working on the bid, so.
Are there any questions from the commission?
Thank you much. Appreciate the chance.
Thank you very much. With that, what is before us, 2023-152, is the appointment of Richard Jones and Whitney Carlisle. I think the commission all got their information on that. Are there any questions that they would like to pose with the two applicants, or myself for the two applicants? Seeing none, is there a motion, is there a motion related to 2023-152?
Move to approve 2023-152.
Motion's been made for approval of 2023-152. Discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
That brings us to the last issue on our agenda. That would be 2023-153. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-153 is the consideration of approving the contract for professional services with the Clay County Economic Development Council. This agreement is for professional services totaling $100,000. It is included in the 2023 budget. There was discussion during the budget process about the professional services and the contract with the EDC. So the contract was reviewed, and there were changes made to that contract, and especially in the scope of services. Those are highlighted for you in the document included in your packet. There were 12 particular items that were embedded and proposed to the EDC regarding the scope of services for this agreement. I do believe that the EDC had a meeting this morning, and I've not heard anything back, but I believe possibly Commissioner Nolte was at the meeting and maybe has some insight on the EDC's meeting.
I did. Before I go into that, I just want to, first off, on the document itself, see if there are any questions, because the counselor would be able to handle those better. And then I will move on to the EDC portion of it. That way, I mean, we can go back and forth, but I just thought, if anybody had any questions about the document itself, either myself or the counselor could try to handle those, then we will move on to the second part of the question. Commissioner Withington.
So I know that you are currently on the board as the presiding, but this says the Clay County Pro Tem. So does that mean Scott will be replacing somebody, or is this a new seat?
The contemplation is that this would be a new seat, and I'm glad you brought that up, because what that's going to require is they have bylaws that they work under. I should say "we," since I'm a member of that body. And it defines the number of members. So they are going to have to go back to their membership and propose a bylaw change to allow for the Pro Tem. And I thought it was a good idea to assign that by office as opposed to a person. It just seemed to make more sense, and it kind of, I thought, gave some predictability to the process.
Yeah, no, I agree. So can we approve this, then, if they haven't approved their bylaw change?
It would not take effect, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Counselor, but we could pass it tonight and then submit it to them. And that does kind of dovetail into the discussion today. While it was an executive session of that group, I did ask that they give me instruction on what I could share with the commission, trying not to violate that executive session either. So yes, they are, they're okay with this. Essentially, is it. One of the things that we might consider doing as we go forward is, they usually would get this funding at the beginning of the year. They're kind of getting by without it. The county, as I think many of you know, is roughly one-third of their budget. So how we would, you know, if we decide to go with this tonight, how we would then time the release of funds, because there's a certain timeline attached to the approval by the general body of a change of that sort. But they seem ready to move on that right now, as far as, that's what I was getting from them this morning. Right, no, it's, yeah, they would create a new seat otherwise, that would require them to kick somebody off, and I'm afraid it would be me. Are there any other questions about this issue, number 153?
Have we figured out how they're going to spend this money? Because I know when Ms. Sola and Mr. Slater came, they told every single one of us that they wanted a blank check. So, and I know I asked some follow-up questions, and they came back and they said that they wanted $5,000 to promote the new interchange. $5,000 doesn't seem like it's going to do much money, especially when the partnership, the development partnership already has site control. They're already working on a plan for that. So it just seemed to me that they just threw a bunch of stuff at the wall, hoping it would stick. And I'm going to vote no if we don't know how this money's going to be spent. I'm not going to vote to give them a blank check. So have we, you're on the executive board. Have they made that decision yet?
Well, one of the parts of that discussion entailed that very issue. One of the points that was made was, we don't always know. That is to say, that body doesn't always know, and they need to be able to move on opportunities. So the funds, to some degree, are commingled, so they can say what they are spending it on broadly. But they, you know, if they say, we will spend it on X project, and that's it, if X project goes away, if it somehow fails, then are they in violation of their contract? So I think, I think there has to be accountability. And, Mr. Counselor, are there some reporting requirements in our contract? I'm trying to remember. There you go.
The biggest change here is the change of control. We're doubling our representation, and I think there was a feeling that that gives us a lot more control of that body to actually direct it. And at the end of the day, that may be, is the best place to be, is having more control over a body, as opposed to being one vote and being overruled. With two votes, we will have a lot more say in what they do and how they make decisions.
And another part of this is the idea that, as we are on there, we need to get more accountability. Should this pass, the Pro Tem and I would be on that particular board, and Commissioner Carpenter's, of course, on Midwest Small Business Finance. So what I'm hoping is our involvement with EDC as we go along is going to be the mechanism. The other thing that strikes me on this is, if they do something that is just overtly offensive, for lack of a better way to put it, to the commission, there, I mean, we're not that far away from them having to come back to us and ask for another renewal of this. So this is only for one year. So if, you know, I believe they're thinking in terms of the long-range plan, and we are, in my opinion, we're too large a portion of their budget to really have them think about annoying us very much. Am I spending it poorly? Hold on. Wait a minute. Let me go ahead and get your mic back on. There we are. Okay. There you are. Now you're on.
Okay, so the answer to my question is, no, we don't know how they're going to spend the money. We're going to give it to them, because we make up one-third of their budget.
And we will be overseeing how that is spent.
But we don't know. I mean, if we're just adding another board member, they still have, right? It's not like we're controlling the board. So, all right, so that's all I wanted to know. So we just don't know how they're going to spend it. Okay.
And Commissioner, if I can address, I think one of you asked an additional question about reporting. My recollection is, so there are two different levels of reporting. Upon execution of the contract, within 30 days, they have to give us their budget. And certainly, within that timeframe, I think we would expect a pretty detailed idea of what they're going to do with the money. That's within 30 days. And then in addition to that, there's a quarterly report that is both financial and their activity. And so we would get, we would get quarterly, so I would assume we'd get three more of those this year.
Yeah, and that's what I was asking about, because I was trying to remember exactly what was in and out, because we've been going back and forth on some of those issues. So, yeah, we are, we're monitoring. I would probably stop short of saying we would be micromanaging. Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, that's just exactly what I was going to say. I noticed that when I read this earlier in the day, it said that there would be quarterly reporting. So I think every quarter they come in here, they give us, you know, what they are doing. I noticed also in this document that it did reference a number of things that they would be involved in doing. So I think that they realize that they're going to have to prove to us that that money's being used for the good of Clay County and the development.
I understand that. I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm probably going to vote no, because I don't, when they came in and asked for a blank check, and then they just threw a bunch of stuff at the wall, I don't, they need to prove it.
Do you need your mic?
Well, but here, think about this, and I'm with you. I think we spend too darn much money in this county for stupid stuff anyway. But I do feel that this is a situation where we're partnering with them. And these two being on the board, and I would charge both of you people with coming back and sharing what happens at those meetings, because oftentimes, we don't hear those things. So hearing the progress that's being made, I think, will make him feel, make us all feel better, that, you know, we're wisely spending that money, just like with other associations that have asked us for bucks.
Well, so Jerry, do you think we got a return on our investment that we made last year?
Yes, I think so. I think, I think that the progress that we're making on some of these issues, and I'll give you an example. Anyauck Shopping Center, that redo was well under, was on the table long before I got elected as a state representative. So I picked that up and worked on it, worked on it for eight years as a state representative. It still didn't get done. It got done after I left office. And it's not because of any particular slow walking of it. It just sometimes takes that long to get some of these projects done. And I would say that you don't look for a return on investment, you know, immediately. I think we're looking at a longer process. The other thing that occurs to me, and I think this is something worth doing, is in past years, in the relationship the commission had with the EDC, they have any number of committees. And so I think having, you know, members of this panel serve on some of those other commissions. For instance, NEBA, that's the Northland Education Business Association. There are other groups, so I think, I think it's a positive thing for us to have a number of our members participate in that. And that's not, it's not too heavy a duty. It's usually one meeting a month, if that. But that, what that does is that gives you the ability to get a feel for it. I mean, it at least gives you an entree into it. That being said, I do think we need to make sure that we're not, we can't be looking over their shoulder and micromanaging them. Because while we do, we are a hefty part of their budget, they do give budget dollars. You know, we're, like I say, one-third. That means two-thirds comes from other places. So I feel comfortable with the idea that with three of us involved already, and then if other commissioners want to become involved in some of the other commissions, I think we can get a feel for the organization. We can contribute, which is really the point, whatever expertise any commissioner would bring to the table. As I said, the one thing that I would, I would probably caution against, and that is any attempt to get too, you know, micromanaging about this. We need to make sure that the money is spent wisely. But, you know, like I say, sometimes, things change as far as the opportunities that are there, and the money has to be switched around, and not too different from the way we switch our money.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's being spent, because one thing that they pointed out was they wanted money for travel to conferences and everything. I just, we have a lot of needs in this county, and paying for Mr. Slater to go to a conference doesn't seem like a high priority to the taxpayers, so.
If there's a return on that investment, I mean, if he's just, you know, if he's going there, and there is a, and there is forward motion on economic, I mean, let's face it, we as a county send our people to conferences, too. So I think it would depend upon the quality and the result, the return on investment for that kind of a trip.
Yeah, well, I'm going to let other people talk, but I'm, like I said, I'm just going to vote no. I just, I just don't like giving them a blank check, and I'm... I just, I just don't like giving them a blank check, and, I mean, they're just going to have to show us in our quarterly reports, so.
Very good. Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, real quick, it was mentioned that we'll go from one to two votes on that board. How many voting members are on that board?
There are seven right now.
Seven, okay, thanks.
I believe. Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. And I appreciate the questions and the conversation, certainly I've had in my own experience in a city that will not be named. So, I, I do understand that, at the end of the day, this is an organization that is primarily supposed to retain or bring in more employers and businesses, right? That's, that's why you have that, and that's why it's done with professionals, and that's why the structure is both private and public, to allow for that, right? I, I think to the point that has been raised, and I think I certainly raised it, too, when we were, when we had this, so I understand, because I, I think there is a bit of a disconnect between what it is doing and its operations, and how that is communicated to us, right? If you're not told, you don't know, and if you don't know, then you wonder, well, what's the value of all of that? To which then, I, I think the reporting function that is here, I, I think hopefully helps with that. But I also think, on our end of things, there is a, an obligation, I think we have, and obligation may be too strong a word, to communicate what our expectations are. And, and I go back to my old foil, the May retreat, to, to suggest that there, if there is not presently time to discuss, I think there should be some time to discuss, what is our expectation? And, and I think to the degree that we can articulate that and can then communicate that, that then sets a tone of what we expect to see when it comes to reporting and activity. Lastly, I'll just say, the, if we do want to, or think of it as a blank check, that check doesn't go far, because our next, our, our next budget will happen much earlier than the last one did, at least that process, and I'll correct if, if that's not going too far afield. So, instead of a, if I understand correctly, instead of a November, December, January, we're now, we were now going to be more into an October, November, December, if I'm correct on that, and I see the nodding of the, of the county attorney. So, you know, we're, we're heading into May, and we'll be talking about a budget as early as October. There's, there's a bit of accountability that I would expect, especially as we set, you know, what our priorities are. So, I don't know if that assuages any of those concerns, but I do understand those concerns, and, and hopefully those timetables and those actions that we will be taking may help set that table a little bit better. So, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Lawson.
Yeah. Here's a suggestion, I don't know how you're going to feel about this. Why don't you have him on the board? Because here's a guy that has a lot of misgivings, he has a lot of great ideas, he's involved in all kinds of stuff, he's, you know, all about the development of this county. I, I think that having someone like him that has a, keeps an eye on things, might make him feel better about it, might keep their feet to the fire as well. And I think it's great, he's a sharp guy, and I trust him and I admire him, but I think we need a bigger, broader range of people on those boards. And, and I think he'd be a key individual, and I think they'd think twice about wasting money if he was sitting on the board.
Well, I, I appreciate that. Thank you. Something that I'd, I'd like to point out, too, is that as we go along, the, there's certain things on economic development that we can do as government, that we, that is an appropriate role for us to play. Some of those are, involve things like incentives and other issues, setting a positive economic atmosphere for businesses to come in. There are other parts where the EDC plays a role that is not necessarily appropriate for government. So, for that reason, I think this is a, a partnership that has been a good one, it, it goes back, my God, I think to the 60s, is that correct? Or am I, am I going too far back in the, in the wayback machine here? But.
It's definitely at least 30-plus years, probably much longer.
Yeah, it has been a, a very long relationship. Obviously, it's been, it's been without, not without its bumps in the road. The other reason I think that this is an organization worth, worth investing in is we at one time had tried to do our own EDC, I was going to say the commission at one time some years ago, to where it would essentially be a department of the commission, which would, of course, exercise more control for the commission, quite honestly. However, it basically failed very miserably. I think we, and the thing is about the EDC that makes it valuable is the input of the private sector. I'm the only, let me see, I'm, yeah, I believe I'm the only elected official on the, the board, on the executive board, so these individuals are, for the most part, made up of people who have businesses, people who understand accountability and are more than willing to hold feet to the fire. With that, if there's no further discussion, go ahead, hold on a sec. Go ahead and turn your microphone back on, then I'll get you. There we are, please.
So, I, I'd like to know how the rest of the commission feels about putting him on. I mean, if, if other people feel the same way I do, I think it, it's kind of a good thing to spread the wealth.
Quite honestly, I'm a little reluctant, I'm reluctant to do that, we've already kind of gone down this road. If we want, this is a contract, we could change it, I guess, at, at the next renewal, but I would.
If he's going to vote no, it's not going to go anyway. I, I'd like to ask the other commissioners, can we do that?
Why would it not go anywhere with a single negative vote?
I thought if you had a negative vote, it couldn't go on through.
Majority.
And why can't we ask the other commissioners?
Well, we can, I'm addressing your other question first.
Okay, 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 well, if he's going to go.
And quite honestly, I, I'm, I'm a little reluctant to take on an issue and hold it hostage to a specific person being put on there. But, well, are there any, well, Commissioner has, has raised that point. Commissioner Johnson, I believe you want to be recognized.
Yeah, so kind of along that same lines that Commissioner Lawson is, is bringing up, so the number one item here under the background, it says, "Name the Clay County Presiding Commissioner and Clay County Pro Tem Commissioner as members of the Board of Directors and Executive Committee of the Development Council." Where did that language come from, and why, why, where did that language come from?
That was what I recommended, because I didn't want to get into a, essentially, a political fight about who would be the second seat. I figured this would be a way to make it about the office, not about the person, in the same way that some of our Mark Board memberships are related to a position, not a person.
So, I can see that a problem with this in the sense that, basically, now you control that, as opposed to the commission being able to, to elect someone or decide, vote, you know, come to a decision on someone. First, I think it'd be a hoot to watch Jason on that board, but that's another topic.
Well, that would, that could be, but we're not do, we're not spending $100,000 for our own personal entertainment.
No, that's not what I'm saying, don't go there. But what I am saying is, is this is very selfish, the way this is written. This does not give the commission a voice, and I think the commission should have a voice on who sits on that board for $100,000.
Any further comments? Seeing none. Is there a motion?
Yes.
I am sorry, let me push a button there.
Move to approve 2023-153.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-153. Any further discussion? Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, question from Legal. Can I make a amendment to this motion to change the language of number one on that contract?
Of course.
So, I move to amend that motion to change the language, instead of Clay County Pro Tem Commissioner, to Clay County Commissioner elected by the commission.
Let me go ahead and restate the motion. The motion has been made to amend 2023-153 to, and maybe, maybe a counselor, you can clean up the language, but essentially to remove the line that says, excuse me.
I assume, basically, that the, this body would appoint or nominate the second member.
Yes.
Right?
Yes. And I'd like to be heard on that, too. Well, we got, I have to restate the motion, then we can have discussion. So, yes, you will be heard. I'm trying to dictate here. Very well. Motion has been made, discussion. Commissioner Johnson, I think you need to react, no, no, you're on, good.
Yeah, so I, I don't have any issue with Scott being on the board, just, I want to make that clear, and there's no issues here, Scott. I just, the verbiage there, I really like the idea of having some input from the commission, and letting the commission have some input on, on who we choose, and if we all choose Scott, that's great, I'm fine with that. I just, I, I would prefer to have a commission that, that has a little bit more of a, of a team voice, I guess, on, on who sits on, on commissions, and particularly on the EDC. That's all.
Further discussion? Commissioner Wagner.
Uh, thank you. Well, what, what I would suggest is, I, I don't want to walk into the same issue that has plagued this discussion for the last few months, i.e., they do something, we do something, and we're not talking. And I, and I would just point out, based on the earlier cover, or the earlier presentation by our presiding commissioner, that at the moment, this is what they have contemplated, this is what they are expecting. If we now say we want to make a change, then my advice would be to hold this until there is a conversation with that group. Because now, we are now not talking about positions that you plug in based on, or who are in those positions. Now, you're saying it could be anybody. Now, that could be fine, but since, since we have been upset that they threw some stuff up on the wall to see if it sticks, I would hate for us to take an action that is essentially throwing something up there to see if it sticks. I would much rather suggest that I withdraw my motion, hold this item, and, and initiate whatever conversation, because I know if something passes based on the history, then there's a big old mushroom cloud that appears somewhere, don't know where, and I would just as soon avoid that. If, if there is a desire that suggests that we would like to have the ability to name whoever that second person is, I would just as soon respectfully have that conversation with their chair and say, "This is, this is the discussion that happened," and see where that takes us. I know they want their money, so maybe that is enough incentive to kind of move it along. Nevertheless, I think it, in a, if we want collaboration, then we in a spirit of collaboration should not take an action and say, and maybe they're watching, maybe they already know, but I think it makes sense to say, "Here's, here's what the commission's talking about," you know, and so on. So, I would just level that advice.
So, you are withdrawing the underlying?
I, I will withdraw that motion for 2023-153 pending a conversation. Right, yes, yours, yours takes precedence, but that'll, that'll be my intention.
Right. So.
If you want to acknowledge me, I can do that as well.
You are recognized.
Yeah, so, two things, first of all, I didn't mean it, my, my amendment to mean that anybody could sit on this board, I meant one of the commissioners would sit on the board, I hope that's, if I didn't make that clear. But yeah, if, if you're willing to withdraw, I mean, I withdraw my motion, so we have more time to talk about this, and, and talk with the, with the EDC as well to, to smooth that out, I don't want to make any ruffles here. So, yeah, I'm fine with that as well.
Very well. It sounds, so you withdrawn your amendment, and are you now going to?
Yes, so I will withdraw.
Okay, there you go, so you've withdrawn, you're, you should be on. Oh, I'm sorry, I hit the wrong button. Too many buttons. There you go, now you should be good.
Uh, yeah, I will withdraw my motion for 2023-153.
Very well, motion has been withdrawn on 123, excuse me, 2023-153. And is it the will of the commission and the consensus that we hold on this until we have been able to consult with EDC further? I don't believe I need a, do I need a vote on that?
We, we don't, I guess from a staff perspective, I'm a little unclear if the, the suggested change is actually the consensus of the commission. I don't want to go reach back out to EDC, and in fact, this body isn't inclined to adopt that new language. I mean, I don't necessarily need to vote, but I'd sure like more consensus than what I've heard, that in fact, the change is what this commission wants.
Very well, so, well, what we need, what you're saying is, we need to give further instruction to, to counsel.
You could, you could vote on the amendment, not approve the contract, but go back to Commissioner Johnson's amendment to the proposed contract and vote on that. And so, then staff knows exactly what we're taking back to the EDC.
So.
If you want to do that.
Actually, my suggestion would be to vote, to approve, reinstate the amendment, find out the answer on the amendment, and then we can either take up your motion tonight, or we don't, and we put it to next week. And then we, then we know what we need to do with EDC. Because if, if the amendment fails, and you guys approve it tonight, we're done, from our perspective. If it fails and you don't approve it tonight, it just goes to next week. If it is approved tonight, then I think what we're seeing is, we'll, we'll have the motion roll over to next week. Oh, I see.
Want to do, you want to do it that way, then? Is everybody pretty much okay with doing that process?
I hope I didn't make that more confusing, I apologize.
So, what, if we're going to re, so whether it's, to make it, to neaten it up a little bit, I will recognize Commissioner Wagner for the motion, and I will recognize Commissioner Johnson for his amendment.
Yep.
And then we will go from there, so Commissioner Wagner.
All right. Move to approve 2023-153.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-153. Commissioner Johnson, there you are.
Move to amend that motion so that the second position on the board is voted on, is a commissioner that's voted on by the whole commission, as opposed to the pro tem.
So, it would, just to clarify, so you're, it would be like any other appointment that we make? Like we just made a bunch of appointments? Because that's in the Constitution.
Well, again, I think the motion is that the commission would vote on it, as opposed to an appointment, which only the presiding would nominate.
Right, right.
So.
Okay.
I think that was the motion, I, I want to make sure I'm hearing it.
Say that again.
Well, if we just do an appointment, under the Constitution, it might, it arguably would fall to the presiding commissioner to make that appointment, and we're probably right back where we were.
Right.
But I think your motion was that the, that the county commission as a body would vote on who that person is, probably make a motion to vote, or to appoint somebody, and the commission would vote.
Yeah, and, and that the, any commissioner could nominate anyone. No.
That's not, that's contrary, that's in, contrary to the Constitution.
No, that's, this is a separate, this is not in the Constitution, this appointment. This is not an appointment. This, this, this in itself is not an appointment. You just said it was an appointment. No.
Well, that's what I want to try to clarify, because I, I think I was hearing that, two different perspectives on this. And so, let's, what I would suggest is, well, let's adopt your motion, and then find, then we'll figure out if it passes or not, because it may become moot.
So, my motion would simply allow the commissioners, all seven of us, to, to make nominations, if it's, if everyone would nominate someone, like Joanne wants to nominate Jason, but allows us to vote as commissioners on who we'd want on that board. What concerns me about that is, if it turns out that that is in fact contrary to the Constitution, that would void the contract. It has nothing to do with the Constitution.
Well, so, again, so my suggestion is, let's get that answer.
Okay, right. Yeah, and rather than bake it in, rather than bake it into the amendment, just make the motion that.
If it passes, I will work on.
Yeah, so.
What the language should be exactly, to bring back to you guys next week.
He's banking on the failure. That's all. Commissioner Wagner, I believe you're looking for recognition.
Yeah, so I, I, I do understand the desire to get some level of direction. However, just this interchange alone tells me it is not ready for prime time. I do believe, based on the, the discussion of I do believe, based on the discussion of three commissioners, that sufficiently tells me that not only do we not need to vote on this today, it tells me that the subject at least must be broached with the person on the other end of the contract. Because the, again, they come from the notion of we, you know, this is what they've seen, this is what they're ready to react to. I think, quite honestly, all one needs to say to that organization that, "Would you accept anyone else besides what is named in this position?" That, that tells me where they're at, while you also investigate whether or not constitutionally how this is viewed. Because I guarantee anybody on the other side who disagrees with this course of action will bring up the very same issue. Again, in a spirit of cooperation as opposed to confrontation, I would, I would just as soon staff have that conversation, or whomever wishes to have it, to see where we land. Because any sort of confrontation, in my opinion, based on the history that this county has had with that organization, only poisons the well. And I would just as soon avoid that if we can. That's just my two cents for whatever that's worth.
Commissioner Lawson?
Okay. First of all, we make the decision, sitting here, on who gets what money. So, if we say, "We're gonna give you $10,000," or $100,000, whatever the heck it is, and you, and we're, we'd like to have these two people on the board. I don't think, did you actually go to them and say, "It's gonna be me and Scott that are gonna sit on the board"?
My first part of that was to say, "We need new people."
Okay.
Well, the reason that I wanted to go for the pro tem was because the fact that I wanted to avoid just exactly what's happening right now, which is a knockdown, dragout over what's gonna happen. And quite honestly, one of the things I find concerning is that there seems to be some gleefulness in the fact that we're gonna stick our finger in the eye of the EDC. That's not exactly how we do this thing to where if we want a productive relationship. Please.
I, I'm not trying. If you remember, I was one that fought for them to get the money. I want them to get the money. I think they do a lot of good. I'd like to see them be a little more cautious in how they spend their money. You know, after all, it is not our money, per se. It is the taxpayers' money that we promised we would keep an eye out for how things were spent. That was what we all ran on. So, I'm trying to do that. But I do feel, I don't think it's, if you've never said to them, "These are the two people that are going to be on there."
I did subsequently, just to make sure.
Okay, then that's fine.
No, I started out saying just two members, and then to avoid this kind of, this kind of controversy, because it has been a stormy relationship. That's why I thought it best to name offices rather than persons.
Okay, and I appreciate that, but you know, sometimes it doesn't always have to be, and I don't mean this confrontationally, but darn it, Jerry, you've named the majority, the large majority of the people that have been put on the boards. And it does say this, that in here, but it also says in here, "With the agreement of boards, commission, the commission." So, we should have a voice in that. And I, that's why there are seven of us. That's why the people put us in here for change. And I don't think that it's right that one person controls all the boards. I, you know, I just don't. And I, let me finish, and then you can talk. But the other thing is, I think what Jay is saying is really good, that we would have two commissioners. You can be a commissioner, but we should have the opportunity, one time. He asked you to be on the mark board. He asks specifically. On this board, you've made it where an additional person could be. Why couldn't you have made an additional person for the mark board? I mean, the man asked for it.
Because the mark board has their own bylaws, and we only have so many, and Commissioner Whittington is in fact been assigned.
He is assigned.
And we just did the parks board. You had the recommendation, Mr. McCune.
Yep.
I honored that and nominated that person.
After six months. But, the bottom line is that I'd like for all of us to have a voice on that. That's, that's all I'm saying. And I think you should go back to them, since you've told them what, the way it was gonna be. Let them know that it's not gonna be confrontational. It's, I don't think so. You know, Jason, I've not seen Jason be confrontational about one thing on this commission. He's voiced his opinion, and I've been more controversial than he has. And, and so consequently, I think that he's gonna go down there if he's chosen, if it works out. And I think the only thing he's going to do is ask a few questions to make them aware. You know, we're watching the money. That's what we're supposed to do. So, I don't see a big problem with it, but I agree 100,000%. Go back to them, make sure they're okay, come back, and we'll do what we have to do. That's all.
I would contend that you do have a voice in this because we are discussing that right now. If you were to vote no on the contract, you are in fact, you do have a voice. So, it's not me dictating this. I'm just saying, here's the proposal.
Yeah.
We know who the pro tem is.
Yeah, we love him.
So, if you, if you think that there is someone better, perhaps you should vote no on the contract.
Okay.
So, you do have a vote, you do have a voice, so please don't go down there.
Okay.
Commissioner Whittington, you're recognized, please.
Yeah, so, I, I have concerns, but I didn't think my concerns were to create what this is. I have, you said that we're gleefully whatever. I have not talked to anybody on this commission about this. So, I do take obsessions of that, kind of, you know, Jerry, you've done that before where you've misstated things. So, I know, know what, I'm not taking any gleefulness out of any of this. Had I known that it was gonna become this, I would have just voted no and kept my mouth shut. But I do agree with what Jay said. I think the commission should have a say. I think Scott would be great on it. I think everybody on this commission would be great on the board. But I just wanted to say, no one's taking gleefulness out of this. And I, you know, Jerry, you just need quit misrepresenting things like that. That's, this is like the third or fourth time you've done it.
That was my opinion. And I, you know, perhaps I should be a little less passionate about it, but yeah, that was my, that was my opinion of, and not yourself. And it wasn't directed at you.
I have talked to nobody about, I haven't talked to any of the commissioners. The only time I've talked to Jay and Joanne is when they, and John was when they asked me how my job search was going. So, I have not talked about this, so-
I was not referring to you.
Okay. Well, I just want to say, I just wanted to clear that up. And, but I do want to say that I think the commission should have a say. I think it's great that we're gonna have a second seat on the board, maybe. But I just wanted to make sure everybody knew I wasn't being gleefully about any of this, so.
I'm gonna go ahead, and I'm gonna go to Commissioner Johnson. I just want to make one clarification because, you know, I was at the meeting today, and obviously, none of the rest of you were because it was a closed meeting. What I said when we started this conversation was, yes, they are open to this change. They're not enthused about it. They're open to it. And I would also point out that in the past, the EDC has done without the help of the county when it's gotten to be kind of sticky. So, I guess what I'm saying is certainly they want our help, they want our assistance. But how they will react, you know, if we, if we bring the contract back with that change, I don't know. I don't know, we'll just have to see. So, it is up to the commission whether or not they want to, you know, make this adjustment or not. But I just want to make sure that I was not misconstrued by saying they were open to this change to say that, you know, they're pretty much ready to vote for whatever we send them. I can't say that they are. That's gonna be the subject of deliberation if this is returned to them. I'll tell you what, I'll go ahead and go to Commissioner Johnson because he's, he was there first. Then I'll go to Commissioner Thompson, and then after no other comments, I'd like to go to Commissioner Johnson to close on his amendment. So, does that sound like a good procedure? Okay, Commissioner Johnson?
I'll be brief. I just want to make it clear, I'm not trying to get Commissioner Whittington on the board. That's not my drive here. This is just about democracy for me. And I kind of felt Joanne was kind of shut down when she offered a suggestion. And my thought is, hey, you know what, there are seven of us up here. Let's come to a conclusion, you know, collectively on who we think should be on that board, that's all.
Commissioner Thompson, I noticed your light went off. Did you want to be recognized?
Yes, just briefly. I'll keep it very quick. I feel that this has become a much bigger issue than what I think it was originally meant to be today. So, I would, you know, go in the direction of Commissioner Wagner, that maybe this is something we come back and discuss next week. Because we don't even know the parameters, if we can, if we can even put another commissioner on there. Is that still an appointment? How does that work? I will say, I am, I'm a fan of having more voice of the commission and us having, being a little more vocal and saying, you know, like, I don't even know if Commissioner Whittington wants to be on this board. It's like, I don't know, do you want to, do you even want to do this? Because we haven't talked about it. So, I'm open to options and, but I think there's, we haven't had enough conversation, but I think there's some work legal needs to do. I think there's conversation with the EDC. I don't know if maybe one of them would like to come and join us and, next week, and sit. We can have a conversation after we get some ducks in a row. But I don't know if we're ready to move forward with this today.
If there's no further discussion, we've been at this for a bit. I'd like to go ahead and recognize Commissioner Johnson to close. And then we will go ahead and vote on that because I think we've kind of talked this thing around pretty deeply. Before I do that, though, Commissioner Carpenter, I didn't want you to feel left out. Do you have any, anything you'd like to share? You are wise beyond your years. Commissioner Johnson, if you'd like, go ahead and press your button. I'll recognize you. There you go.
Nope, I have nothing else to say. I think enough has been said.
So, you close. Very well. Motion on the floor is the amendment proposed by Commissioner Johnson on 2023-153. There is no further discussion. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
No.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
The amendment passes. That brings us to, for under discussion, 2023-153 as amended. Commissioner Wagner, would you like to be recognized?
Yes, per our discussion earlier, whenever earlier was, I will withdraw my motion for 2023-153 as amended.
Very well. Motion has been withdrawn. That concludes our regular agenda. So, with that-
Will that be moved to second meeting next week?
That will, probably. I mean, it may not, if we cannot come, you know, it may not, with the amendment, it may or may, yes. What would, does the commission want to see this on the agenda for next week? I just get, just a kind of consensus thing. Commissioner Wagner?
I would just say, we came today with the assumption that there was agreement with the EDC, and for that reason, it was put on this agenda. My opinion is that there's no point in passing a contract if the other party will not pass it. So, the optimist in me will say, "Yes, let's discuss this next week." The pessimist in me says, "Let's talk to them first to see if they are going to pass it. Otherwise, what's the point?" So, if I could make that suggestion, that's what I would suggest today.
Okay. If it's, if it's ready for next week, that's when it'll go on. If it's not, it may take more work.
Okay, so, I guess the consensus of the commission, and I'll try to restate that and make sure everybody's okay. If it is ready for, to be brought before us again, that is to say, the talks with EDC have become fruitful, and at this point, I think that needs to come from staff. I'm not interested in really negotiating this out any further. So, if, and then when staff advises us that the, that the contract is ready to go forward, then we will consider it either next meeting or whatever subsequent meeting it becomes ready. Is that pretty much the consensus of the commission? Does staff feel, I hate to say comfortable, but do you feel you understand the-
We have our direction, yes, thank you.
With that, that brings us to county administrator comments. And we certainly have left you out of this conversation, so this is your chance.
So, just a couple of items. The county, along with organizations across the country, have celebrated today administrative assistance. And we certainly want to recognize those in the county that in all departments have, and it's, I would say it's broader than that, than administrative assistance. It's really the support staff across the organization. It can be the finance team, it can be administrative assistants. They are the backbone of our organization, and they do a lot of work behind the scenes. And we sincerely appreciate all those individuals across the county that help us do the work that we do. We couldn't do it without them. And the other item is that the next meeting of the commission will be next Wednesday, May 3rd, at 3:00 here in the hearing room.
Very good. That brings us to commissioner comments. Let's start with Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Commissioner. No comments.
Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Johnson?
No comments.
Commissioner Whittington? Commissioner Lawson?
I've said enough, no.
Commissioner Wagner?
No comments, thank you.
It is after 7:30, so I don't believe I have much to say either. With that-